Thank you. At, it is now 6:34. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board, joint meeting with the Cooperative Budget Committee.
And at 6:34, I'd like to call to order the Budget Committee part of the joint meeting and call us to order for the meeting and public hearing for the FY21 budget. If I could ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the members of the Budget Committee who are present this evening. My name is Darlene Mann. I'm the Chair of the Co-op Budget Committee. We have Matt McGuire, Raul Marché, Dave Flynn, Ryan Rader, Lauren Redstrom, Tom Enright, and Cindy Van Conen is our Budget Committee Representative.
School Board Representative.
Our School Board Representative, thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity as well to thank Superintendent Andy Corey, Assistant Superintendent Bob Thompson, and our BA Kelly Sealy, ICR Assistant BA Linda Sherwood, and the audience for being present for tonight's meeting. And if Holly, you can introduce the members of your board.
Sure. The Co-op School Board, at the end over there is Tom Solon, Cindy Van Conen, myself, Holly Delo Babcock, Beth Williams, and Krista Whalen. And we are missing, we have two people absent tonight, Elizabeth Brown and Melanie Lebeck.
Okay. Our kind of standard practice is to appoint a meeting observer for any of our meetings. Dave, you had that on our last month and you were unfortunately absent, so here you are tonight, and so I'll ask you to be our process observer. I'll ask also for quickly any agenda adjustments. The only one I'll make on the supplement, another agenda that we had posted was we're going to hold any meeting approval, meeting minute approval until our next meeting. So with that being said, we can move on to a brief overview of the warrant article and some background information and financial summaries for the FY21 budget. Our warrant this year will have Article One is the HESA contract will be looking at the third year total of $81,139. We have the school operating budget in Article Two, which is $23,499,72. The SAU budget for the Co-op share is $910,255. Expendable Trust Fund, Expendable Athletic Trust for $67,000, the Facilities Maintenance Trust of $200,000, Special Education Trust of $25,000, and a $100,000 contingency for a total of, if all passes written, for $24,882,466, which is a 1.9% increase from last year's total budget. Just quickly to talk about the budget distribution and how that breaks down, we have 55% in salaries and benefits, 18% for Student Services, which is about 4.6 million, and that total for Student Services does include salaries related to the employees that provide those services. So some of, so that's where the salary and benefits, the large blue section of 55% looks a little small. We've typically referred to closer to maybe 65% of the budget in salaries, but we do, it did carry over some of those Student Service salaries into that, to capture that whole Student Services number, and have consistently done that for budget representation purposes. We have bond service of about $800,000, transfers of just under a million, representing 4% of the budget, transportation costs not related to Student Services, and Special Education of about $1 million, Building Maintenance in the same range of about $1 million, which would leave 12% of the budget, or about $3 million for General Education. Looking quickly, just going over student enrollment, what we see for the past, say, from FY20 going into FY22 is a relatively steady level of enrollment, really just shifting one or two students annually. And after that, we start to see a little trend, a slight trend downward before an upward tick in FY25, and we're going to start to see some of the higher enrollments we're seeing in the K to six districts move up to the Co-op. We talked a little bit about this at the apportionment meeting last week, and just this slide just identifies the distribution of students between Hollis and Brookline, where we are now in FY20 and for the past three prior years, so for about four years, the district has been, while the student number has changed, the percentage has been around 5149 as a distribution between Hollis and Brookline. And what we're going to start to see happening, based on the NASDAQ estimates, is that we're going to start to see that gap widen a little bit into the 53, 54, and 55% Hollis versus, say, 45% Brookline as you trend out over the next five years. That has an impact as we look at apportionment because it is, there's a significant component that is based on average daily membership, and so that has bearing on how costs are distributed between the two towns. This chart is meant to represent and show, while the blue columns are the budgets that we end up approving, the red columns are what we actually collect in taxes. So on a consistent basis...
Could you leave your microphone closer, just make sure people online are getting it?
Sure. So on a consistent basis, the red bars represent about 67% of the budget, so we're, again, that's the amount that we end up collecting in taxes. The budget itself is reduced by revenue and state aid and results in that lower amount. That is actually what affects your tax rate. As I just mentioned, revenue and state aid are the things that reduce the budget, and I just wanted to briefly touch on some of the trends that we're going to see and expect to see for the FY21 budget. Looking at Co-op revenue, we see a 5.8% decrease of about $115,000, 115, 125. That's specifically due to conservative estimate of our Medicaid expenses. There's a rule change at the state level about what expenses from Student Services qualify for Medicaid, and so we drastically altered the revenue projection actually to zero for FY21 because of that rule change. It's a continuing effort at the state level that to determine what will and will not qualify, so we took a very conservative approach going into this next budget because the rules are continuously changing and we just don't know at this point what will qualify. The upside is if the rules change and are finalized and we can submit some of these expenses for reimbursement, we'll see additional revenue, but right now it's a more conservative approach. With regard to state aid, you see that Hollis has relatively flat, slightly declining state aid in total, and Brookline is looking at a 21% increase due specifically to one-time additional aid that's included in the adequacy grant that's called at the, from the state level disparity aid, and it was distributed to towns on a sliding scale in two components, one based on free and reduced price lunches, and the other based on property values per student. And so if you didn't have $1 million in property value per student, based on where you, how you fell short on that, the state scaled an amount per student. In Brookline's case, in total, the amount is just shy of $1.3 million that gets split between the K to six schools and the seven to 12 schools. So that's why Brookline is seeing a dramatic increase for state aid in FY21. It is intended, as of right now, to be a one-time change, so for FY22, we wouldn't expect to see that aid unless there's some legislative update between now and then. And as we just finished our apportionment meeting last week, it just seems so long ago. It was only last week. Our apportionment formula essentially maintained the 95-5% split between ADM and EV on non-bonded costs and 100% EV on bonded costs with one additional dollar going to Hollis. So because the formula itself looks at ADM and EV in arrears, we're use estimates of what FY20's ADM breakdown would be, which is still that 5149, that slight shift that we're seeing in next year's student population would affect the next year's budget for FY22. And an estimate of 2019 EV shows a 6931% split, yielding net apportionment of just about 5347, and after all the state aid is taken into account, the distribution would be 57% Hollis, 43% Brookline. So the interesting to know, the interesting thing to note is as a result of all these, you know, this 1.9% increase in the budget, this decrease in Co-op revenue, increase in total grants, we end up with an essentially flat local tax effort. The difference is only, is less than $24,000 or .1%. Looking at each town, this is where apportionment comes into play, so at the third line down, which is net to be apportioned, that's the point where we apply the apportionment formula and then reduce each town's net to be apportioned, each town's individual state aid, resulting in a tax effort for Hollis of $9.5 million and Brookline of $7.3. For Hollis, that's yields a tax rate per thousand of $6.97, which is a 3.3% increase on the Co-op tax rate, or a 1% increase to the total bill. Again, these are estimates based on how things were finalized in other districts. And for Brookline, the tax rate would be $10.88 per thousand, which represents a 6% decrease from the current tax rate of $11.57 per thousand for the Co-op, netting to a decrease of 2.4% on the overall town tax rate. So at this point, I'll recess the Budget Committee and move on to the public hearing of warrant. So we'll stand in recess at 6:46 PM.
Do you need a motion? I, but I need a motion.
Do we need a motion for that?
That's what it seems to say.
Okay, great. We'll take a motion. I'll take a motion to go into recess at 6:46 PM for Brian, seconded for Raul. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd need a motion to recess until the conclusion of the public hearing for the Co-op School Board. Second? Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. All in favor? Five.
Great. So we, each, each board and committee stand in recess and we can...
6:47.
6:47. And we can open the public hearing. So at this point, the intent of the public hearing is to introduce the articles from the warrant with stated financial impact, which will be voted on at the district meeting. We'll look at, for public input on a per article basis, and after the public hearing of all the articles, the Budget Committee as well as the School Board will be taking positions on the articles. The amount at that time of the budget article itself can be amended by the Budget Committee, and the net impact at the, and as a result of any amendments at district meeting is a 10% maximum allowable appropriation. So once everything is calculated and approved here tonight, we'll calculate that 10% maximum so that we have that information available for the district meeting. Rules for public input, while we don't have, we do have a member of the public present just to go over the rules for public input. It's restricted to Hollis and Brookline residents of legal voting age. An exception can be made for administration or others as necessary for clarification. We, as I said, are requesting input per article. We ask that you please go to the podium and be recognized by the Chair. State your name and address for the record. Direct questions to the Chair specifically across a speaking time of two minutes, and you can speak again to an article after all others have had an opportunity, which I don't think will be a problem tonight. And please be brief if your point has been substantially made by others.
The microphone is not currently connected.
Oh.
It's wireless.
Thank you, Tom. So Article One, to see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items for the third year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board and the Hollis Education Support Staff Association for the 2018-19, 2019-20, and 2020-21 school years, which calls for the following increase in support staff salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. For fiscal year 2021, the estimated increase is $81,139. And further, to raise and appropriate a sum of $81,139 for the third fiscal year, 2021 school year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in support staff salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be made at current staffing levels. School Board and Budget Committee have yet to make recommendations on this appropriation. The estimated tax impact is 3 cents per thousand in Hollis and 5 cents per thousand in Brookline. One slide that goes over just some of the highlights of the contract, as I mentioned, it's the third, the year three of a three-year agreement. Take, we'll look at salaries in the third year to, on the step table move up by 2% and a 3% increase for any employee who is off the step table. Year three is looking at a $50 increase to the single, the employees who take a single plan and health insurance...
It's $50 to each one of them.
To each one of those. So it moves, single up to $760, two-person up to $1,210, and a family plan up to $1,260. The first year of the contract did a consolidation of the salary schedule to even out the increases step, that exist between the steps. And there's an additional educational wage adjustment of a dollar per hour for those with a BA or Bachelor of Arts or Bachelor of Science degree at $2 per hour if you have a Master's of Arts or a Master's of Science. This time, is there any input on the HESA agreement? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article Two, the operating budget, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $23,499,72 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for the school district officials and agents, and for the payment of statutory obligations of the district. This appropriation does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles. Again, School Board and Budget Committee will make recommendations later this evening. Estimated tax impact for Hollis is $6.72 per thousand, and for Brookline, $10.49 per thousand. Few highlights of the changes to the operating budget. The FY21 budget represents a 1.4% increase of about $315,000 from the prior year. It includes some FTE changes or headcount changes within the budget that net to a minus one change in headcount. There, the budget itself includes funding for cyclical technology upgrades and continued facilities maintenance for both middle school and high school. The major increases we see are about $405,000 or 5% in salaries. This amount includes the third year of the professional staff contract. Actually, it says it was approved last year. It was actually approved the year prior. It is the third year, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that adjustment. There are some additional increases or funding for teacher lane changes, which is when teachers reach another education level in the step table, they would move over a lane as well as up a step. And we have lower than anticipated retirements, we have anticipated retirements that are lower than last year, or this current year that we're in right now. Associated with those salary increases are some payroll-related expenses for New Hampshire Retirement and FICA, so that's about an increase of just under $118,000 or a 4.5% increase. We see technology upgrades of 92,000, with additional expense of about $92,000. And this includes updates to the equipment that we have to be able to support Windows 10 and a phased technology plan, a replacement plan for technology at the high school. For transportation, we see some slight increases, this of about $24,000, and this is on transportation related to regular education, not special education. Those are increases related to the second year of a transportation contract, and we have about $311,000 of new items, which include other general maintenance across the district, textbook, and some security upgrades.
Just to note, the transportation was increases for the third year rather than the second year, that's just a minor...
It is the third year, okay.
Well, I mean, this is the third, this is the third year of the contract.
I thought this was, didn't we just negotiate last year? So next year's the second year.
This is the second year?
No. Next year is the second year.
Next year's the second year.
We're in the first year now. Next year's the second year.
Okay, so the wording is correct then, all right.
Okay.
I'm just confusing everybody.
Okay.
You're welcome.
The major decreases were about...
Give me a hair a break.
Were about $351,000 in Student Services, or a 7% decrease due to changes in student programming. We have benefit savings in healthcare and a retirement payout that's contract-related. So while we're still seeing increases of the GMR in healthcare of a 4, anticipating a 4.1% increase in the medical benefit costs and a 3.9% increase in dental costs, just based on the distribution of expenses and who's taking what plan, we're seeing overall savings and potentially more people that are not taking a plan and opting out and things like that, so we are seeing and anticipating savings and benefits. And wanted to make note of an $11,000 reduction in expendable supplies as we shift out some workbook replacement and some other savings in some supply lines. So at this time, I'll take any questions related to the budget, or public input related to the budget. I'm sorry, could you say your name a little louder? Thank you.
Initially, you mentioned something about a full-time equivalent.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a decrease in that, did I understand?
Yes.
And what is that?
So a full-time equivalent headcount is like one full-time employee. So what, there are some puts and takes into the budget itself, so we included things like adding an additional section for high school, high school French, an additional section for middle school French, reducing to paraprofessionals from Student Services, adding a shared substitute nurse across all of the districts, which is about half a headcount. So the result of those increases and decreases is a reduction of one full headcount.
I guess my question pertains to nursing. I myself am a nurse, have been a nurse in the world for years. I've been a pediatric nurse and also worked with developmentally disabled individuals. What is the breakdown, the role like at the high school and the middle school?
It's about a 2/3 to 1/3, so a little over 1,200 students, 800-ish at the middle school and, I'm sorry.
At the high school.
At the high school, sorry. I'm in the wrong district right now. So 800 at the high school and about 400 here in the middle school.
And just because I've got my facts, you have, I have one nurse in each building?
We have two nurses at the, full-time nurses at the high school, one at the middle school, and then this year we have a substitute nurse that works three days a week across the six buildings.
So you have two in the high school?
Yep.
One in the middle school?
Yep.
And a sub?
And a dedicated sub-nurse, which is in addition to, you know, we have a number of substitute nurses that come in and cover when one of the nurses is out.
And how many specialized students have their own nurse or medical care position?
None. We do have a number of students that have, you know, medically necessary services in their IEP, but none of them that require to have a nurse assigned to them individually.
And are you aware of those ratios that are recommended for nurse and student education?
Yes, as part of Ed Regulation 306.
And what is it?
And off the top of my head, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I do know that we are well within...
You're well within.
Within, within the guidelines.
You have full-time nurses in the high school?
Yeah.
That's unbelievable. And you want to add another nurse?
Yeah, a lot of that has to do with the fact that our nurses are pulled to go on a number of field trips. Again, going back to your question about students with IEPs, you know, we will have students that have pretty complicated medical needs, and when we go on a field trip, a nurse will go with them, or a nurse will participate in an IEP meeting. So we found that, you know, there is a need for a nurse sub to cover the days that our nurses are out throughout the district.
So I'm not quite sure how that adding another nurse to this whole equation, how many are going to end up with that in the Co-op? Is it four?
No, we'll, we'll have the two nurses at the high school, the one at the middle school, and then the sub-nurse will be utilized throughout Brookline, Hollis, and the Co-op as well.
But you also say you had a sub-nurse too?
Well, it's, right now, that position is budgeted at three days a week and it's grant-funded. With the approval of the FY21 budget, that nurse sub would be a full-time position because we've determined that the need is there.
Okay, so at this point, I know that we don't have a lot of public present, but we do have a limit to speaking time, so...
My, my, one of my concerns is that you have a need who are doing some daily nursing and things where they're going on field trips. Have you looked into other options in terms of, I know last year was the expensive...
So, so I'm gonna, this isn't the same type of, you know, open forum, we have a little bit more latitude in the town meeting. We do still have some structure and timing to this, so I would ask if you have specific questions, maybe submit them in writing specifically to Mr. Thompson and Mr. Corey, and they can address you directly.
I just think that there's other possible avenues to hire people rather than have a benefited position. I'm looking at also the bottom line in that perspective.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I'll close public, seeing no additional public input, I'll close public input on Article Two. Moving on to Article Three of the SAU budget, shall the district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $910,255 as the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District's portion of the SAU budget of $1,807,100 for the forthcoming fiscal year? This year's adjusted budget of $1,718,104, with $877,075 assigned to the school budget of this school district, will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote of all the district vote, school district voters voting in this school administrative unit. Each board has yet to make a recommendation. For Hollis, this is an estimated tax impact of 38 cents per thousand, and for Brookline, it's 59 cents per thousand. Just as an aside, it's about 4% increase from last year's budget to, the SAU budget itself is predominantly salaries and benefits of our SAU staff. There's a trade in and out of an additional headcount for a new facilities director, and we are moving and reducing the transitional position that we had in Student Services that's being removed from the budget. And headcount has shifted. We have plenty of coverage with Mr. Thompson as the Associate Assistant Superintendent, and Amy's position is Assistant...
Assistant Director.
Director of Student Services. So those positions have worked themselves out with a net reduction from, again, reducing that transition position but adding in a facilities director. So at this time, I'll ask for any public input on the SAU budget.
Question, I hope it's simple and...
Drew Mason from Hollis.
Drew Mason, Hollis, not really, as you know, as you probably know, the Hollis School District is talking about a bond to renovate tomorrow. Are any of these funds or any of the this year's budget from the Co-op contributing to the payment paying?
The answer is, the answer is no.
Seeing no additional speakers, I will close public input on the SAU budget and move on to Article Four, the Athletics Expendable Trust, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate up to the sum of $67,000 to be added to the previously established athletic program and services expendable trust fund. The sum to come from the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District's June 30, 2020 unassigned fund balance available on July 1, 2020. Recommendations will be made this evening. Since we're using unassigned fund balance, the resulting tax impact is that we're forcing... Since we're using unassigned fund balance, the resulting tax impact is that we're foregoing a tax reduction of 3 cents per thousand in Hollis or 4 cents per thousand in Brookline. Seeing no public input, I will move on to Article Five, the Facilities Maintenance Expendable Trust, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate up to the sum of $200,000 to be added to the previously established school building and facilities maintenance expendable trust fund. The sum to come from the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District's June 30, 2020 unassigned fund balance available on July 1st, 2020. Recommendations will be made. The S, and again, this is another situation where since it's being funded from the unassigned fund balance, we would be foregoing a tax rate reduction of 8 cents per thousand in Hollis and 13 cents per thousand in Brookline. Actually, I'll change the header on this side to say maintenance fund utilization as opposed to capital improvement plan utilization. Right now, we have an $85,000 beginning balance in the maintenance fund. We're proposing funding of an additional $200,000 to cover the following projects: Phase Three of the HBS roof repair, mason, masonry work at the high school, plumbing and air handler repairs at the high school, some asbestos abatement at the middle school that we became aware of during some of the upgrades for, and changes that were made for the robotics program, and roof repairs at HBMS. We'll also be setting aside $43,000 for the estimated, the anticipated replacement of the middle school elevator, which has a projected cost right now of about $80,000. So we'd like to put $43,000 aside to be, start quote-unquote saving for that replacement that we know is coming. Seeing no public input, I will move on to the Special Education Expendable Trust, Article Six, to see if the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District will vote to raise and appropriate up to $25,000 of the June 30, 2020 unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July 1st, 2020, to be added to the previously established Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. No amount to be raised from taxation. Again, the boards and budget committee will take positions this evening. This is another example of we would be foregoing a tax reduction, tax rate reduction of approximately 1 cent per thousand in Hollis and 2 cents per thousand in Brookline. This is the ongoing funding of special education, of a Special Education Expendable Trust specifically for the co-op, but I think we have them now in each of the school districts after last year's votes. We have kind of a self-imposed cap of $225,000. We currently have $175,000 for the co-op and this would add another 25, putting it up to $200,000. Seeing no public input, I'll move on to arti, I'm sorry?
Please ask Krista.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there public input on Article?
Six.
Six.
Yes, I guess we have some.
Well, I guess we have some public input from Mr. Mason of Brookline.
Son of a gun.
Hollis.
Hollis. Oh, my gosh.
Wow, shut her mic down.
Wow, I need to like step out and come back in again.
Well, Darlene, you're doing all the talking, so it's totally understandable.
Drew Mason, Dr. Ross. Do we, what is our current estimate of the unassigned fund balance? Understanding all the uncertainties.
I think at this point, it will cover all of these articles and at this point. I don't remember what it is on the revenue expense report. I want to say.
Six-seven?
I'm sorry?
He said six-seven.
I saw a number that was about six-seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's over $600,000 for Hollis. I just didn't know the number, so I'll, I'll put it approximately where we would.
I hear saying that will come up at the meeting.
We'll be prepared. Mm-hmm. Seeing no additional public input, move on to Article Seven, the Contingency, to see if the school district will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate up to $100,000 to go into the fund. The sum to come from the unassigned fund balance of, available on July 1st, 2020 and no amount to be raised from taxation. Any appropriation left at the end of the year lapses to the general fund. Again, we'll take positions later this evening as a school board and budget committee and approval of this article would result in foregoing a tax rate reduction of 4 cents per thousand in Hollis and 6 cents per thousand in Brookline. I want to just note that the, the key phrase here in this article is any appropriation left at the end of the year lapses to the general fund. This is different than how the unassigned fund balances work in the towns. So the towns can put money into a contingency and it builds over time. That's not the case for the school districts. Actually, the SAU budget can also build its unassigned fund balance by statute. It's allowed, but this is a contingency specifically for the co-op budget itself. It doesn't go any higher than this amount and it does lapse to the general fund, which is why we need to re-appropriate it every year. I'll ask if there's any public input regarding Article Seven. Seeing none, I'll move on. These additional two articles have no direct dollar amounts related to them. I'll read them just to, to close out the warrant. Article Eight, to see if the school district will authorize the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board to access future year state and federal special education aid funds in the event that special education costs exceed budget limitations. This budget committee typically doesn't make a recommendation on this. It's one left to the school board. Now, the, right now, I have listed as Article Nine to transact any other business which may legally come before said meeting. After we close the public hearing, we'll talk about, very briefly, about some petition warrant articles, so the numbering of these may change, but as of right now, with the draft warrant, that would close out the warrant that we have right now. So I'll give one last chance for public input. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:11 PM.
May we reconvene?
Yeah.
Just say, just say I'm reconvening.
So I, at this point, I'll reconvene the co-op budget committee and we, and we will return to our meeting.
And I'll reconvene the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board to join the joint meeting.
Okay. Great. So at this point, what we typically do is, based on public input, we would take positions. Holly, do you want to just go? We can go article by article.
I think probably the best thing to do is article by article and then do each board votes.
Okay.
Did you have something? Or no, you could, yeah. Okay, got it.
Okay, so at this point, I'll accept a motion to recommend, for the budget committee to recommend Article One as written from Raul, seconded by Dave. So this is the third year of the HESA contract. Any discussion?
Point of order. Are we allowed to participate in the discussion of your consideration?
We'll probably have our own chance to do that.
The reason is that if we are looking to in any way influence the positions taken by the budget committee, that we would have to have input early on.
I would say that if you wanted to have influence as a community member, you could have made a statement of public input. I don't know. Can we have, Andy, can we have each board bring forward a motion and open discussion so that we're all talking about the same thing at the same time?
I think you can do that.
Okay.
Because you posted it as a joint meeting.
Right.
But I think when you go to take your final positions, that's just by board.
Right. Okay, so Holly.
So then, so we need to make, so I need to, our board needs to make a motion to recommend Article One as presented. Moved by Beth, seconded by Krista.
Okay, so now we have an open floor for discussion of all the people present at the meeting. Tom, it looks like you probably have some input.
Well, I didn't want to start one and then switch it mid, midstream.
Okay. Well, thank you for setting us down the path.
No, you already had a chance.
Technically, no.
No, because we closed public input. Is it a point of order consideration with regard to something at the meeting?
I think so.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Are you speaking as our moderator?
No, it's either the district meeting.
Okay.
But you can take public input whenever you choose to. In any case, I believe that in all of these cases, the school board should vote first because the school board sets the warrant and the school board can change the warrant. Budget can, can only.
Change the budget article.
Can change the budget, but can only recommend or not recommend the article as adopted by.
Okay, so we'll make sure that this.
Okay, fair enough.
So we'll make.
Yes, thank you, Drew.
So we'll make sure the school board puts the motion out first and votes first.
Let's just have an open discussion.
Okay, so does anyone have any comments on the, yes?
Just to clarify, on the operating budget, it's reversed.
Yes.
Because the operating budget is the budget, budget.
Yes.
Okay, great. Back to the HESA contract, is there any comments?
We're doing really well.
I just want to say our support staff work very hard and I think this is a great contract for them and it was negotiated in good faith. Any other comments? Okay, for the co-op school board, all those in favor? Five, zero.
For the, any other comments from the budget committee?
I totally agree with what you said.
Thank you, Raul.
I agree with Raul's.
You all agree. So all those in favor of recommending Article One is written from the budget committee? Unanimous. Okay, so that was, how many, we have eight, eight, zero. Great, thank you.
Okay, so now I need a motion to recommend Article Two as presented. This is the operating budget.
Actually, on this one, I think.
Oh, you were supposed to go first.
Okay, well, that's okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
At this point, I'll take a motion to accept the Article Two for the school operating budget in the amount of $23,499,72.
Set moved.
From Brian, seconded by Raul.
And I need a motion to recommend Article Two, the operating budget, $23,499,72 as presented. Moved by Beth, seconded by Krista.
Any discussion?
Tom?
Let me just make a, a comment on.
Okay.
Regarding the PowerPoints, I think just like we highlight all the expenses, we should also highlight the things that are lower cost or lower value. So when we have the charts, they look similar.
Okay, we can talk about that.
You can talk about that, right.
Tom?
There was a note in the presentation on the warrant article for the facilities maintenance that there was $250,000 of capital, capital maintenance in the budget.
Yes.
And I'm concerned that where it's specifically pointed out as capital maintenance, why is that not being funded by a bond in, in overall for, for capital work, which would then have it be apportioned as a capital expense because it's going to infrastructure?
I appreciate that note and I'll clarify and correct that footnote on that slide. It really, those items that are listed as maintenance are really facilities maintenance, if I'm correct, Kelly. None of them are, I don't think any of them are coded to like capital maintenance. It was more of my reference to maintaining the capital of the two buildings, but the.
So they're not, they're not things that would, for example, be depreciated?
Correct. So I can pull up the budget right now. So these are things like tables and chairs, intercom replacement, window replacement, paving.
Window replacement would be, would be, would be depreciated. You can't deduct, if, if it were something that we're going into.
So the, so the way items are.
I know that you don't do it in a, in a school budget, but that is a traditional capital improvement that has an extended life.
I think the, from my vantage point, why they were put into the maintenance trust is because.
No, we're not talking maintenance trust. This is in the.
He's talking about the 250,000 of other.
Is because, to me, they didn't reach the magnitude of like, I'm not replacing all the windows in a wing, I'm not replacing all the windows in a middle school, I'm replacing specific windows that were broken over time. And I, I would suggest that if we were going to look at that type of use, we would have to kind of figure out what is the threshold, because I can't imagine wanting to pay interest on, on that amount of money.
What I have asked for, and I'm not sure if the message had gotten relayed in, but was that we look at total cost for a period of time and, and what's going to be repaired and replaced over a period of time and consider bonding that even if it's not all being expended in a single year, because both the nature of it and the finances of it, there's always been desire to spread it out over the, the period in which it's going to provide benefit to the community.
So that topic of like a bond for multiple larger scale items did come up in the budget committee late in the process and wasn't something that could be addressed in this budget. And for the business office to put together a full scope of what all of those projects would be, what a total amount would be, and be able to pursue funding. But we did discuss that as a budget committee as something to consider.
All right, thank you.
In the future.
Because of all the, you know, big ticket items, I mean, there's a lot of them. A lot of times, we're doing a lot of piecemeal here and, you know, a lot of the stuff really needs to get done and, you know, we might be better off just putting it all in a bond and getting it done. So I mean, I think that's something we really want to look into more.
Yeah, I don't disagree. We're actually using that strategy in one of our other districts in the SAU. I'm hoping that if the SAU budget, which we'll discuss later, passes and we actually get that facilities person on board, that we can load this off to that individual and let them start this process. I mean, Kelly and I happily do the finance and all the charts, but the expertise around HVAC units and things like that, right now, all that has to be done through appointments because we don't have that skill set. So that, I, I, I think the SAU is in line, in our discussion, that the budget committee are in line with the long-term goal that you're looking for.
Seeing no additional input. All those in favor of recommending Article Two as written? Eight to zero for the budget committee, thank you.
And from the co-op school board, all those in favor of recommending the Article Two as written? Five to zero.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I need a motion to recommend Article Three as presented. This is the SAU governing, SAU budget of $910,255.
Set moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth.
Motion from the budget committee to approve the article for the SAU budget for $910,255 as written.
Seconded.
By Lauren, seconded by Brian. I guess I don't have to say the amount. If I'm thinking it is written, it's fine. Any discussion?
Thank you for finally putting the, the maintenance position, maintenance facilities director, and we think that's a very, very good move.
I agree, across three districts and seven buildings, you know, as we move forward, as you said, in other districts, looking at very comprehensive, large-scale projects. I think it's really important and it's a long overdue position for the district, for the SAU.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, co-op school board, all those in favor? No opposed, five to zero.
Budget committee, all those in favor of the SAU budget article? Eight to zero, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to recommend Article Four as presented. This is the athletic, we call this an athletic trust, isn't it? And that's for $67,000. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth.
For the budget committee, motion to approve the athletics, the expendable athletic trust for $67,000 from Dave, from Brian.
Is there any discussion on this?
Quick question I asked before and we weren't really sure. The amount, just, we just seem to be using this as a placeholder amount. Is this still a relatively accurate number of what we're seeing annually?
Yeah, I think last year's number was 66,000 something.
Okay, no, thank you.
And just as a reminder, this is pay for pay, pay to play fees that our athletes' families pay.
And so any use of these funds annually is through a public hearing at a school board meeting, usually in the May-June timeframe.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion from the school board? Okay, we'll vote, all those in favor? Five to zero.
For the budget committee, all those in favor? Eight to zero.
Great, we're up to Article Five, I need a motion to recommend the Article Five as presented, this is for the facilities maintenance trust, two-hundred thousand dollars. So moved by Tom, seconded by Beth.
For the facilities maintenance trust of co-op, I'll take a motion for the co-op budget committee, I'll take a motion to approve, to recommend the trust at two-hundred, funding the trust at two-hundred thousand dollars. From Lauren, seconded by Brian.
Is there any discussion on this one?
As, as I alluded to prior, I am opposed to this, I, I think that this should have been incorporated into a, into a bond structure.
Okay, any other comments from the school board? Okay, all those in favor? And opposed? Three, two.
For the budget committee, all those in favor of the two-hundred thousand dollar facilities maintain, of recommending the facilities maintenance trust at two-hundred thousand dollars? Unanimous at eight to zero.
And we're up to Article Six, motion to recommend Article Six as presented, this is for the special education trust, twenty-five thousand dollars. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth.
For the budget committee, motion to recommend the special education trust at twenty-five thousand dollars? By Lauren, seconded by Dave.
Choking it up a little bit. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, from the co-op school board, all those in favor? Opposed, five to zero.
For the budget committee, all those in favor? Eight to zero.
Article Seven, to recommend Article Seven as presented, for a hundred thousand dollar contingency, I need a motion. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth.
For the budget committee, a motion to recommend the contingency at a hundred thousand dollars? Ooh, by Dave. Seconded by Raul.
Oh, is there any discussion?
None.
Okay, all those in favor?
We should have all raised our hands.
Five to zero.
All those in favor for the budget committee for the contingency? Eight to zero.
Nope, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seven to one, from the budget committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we need a motion for, to approve, uh, I guess we have to be careful because-
I don't have it-
We're done with Article Seven, okay, I'm sorry.
I don't have it listed there because it doesn't financial-
It's ten and eleven.
So we would have to do ten and eleven because eight and nine are-
Well, we won't do eleven.
Not eleven.
Not eleven, but ten, okay. So, I need a motion to approve Article Ten, which is to see if the school district will authorize the Hollis-Brooklyn Cooperative School Board to access future year state and federal special education funds? In the event that special education costs exceed budget limitations. That's moved by Beth, seconded by Tom, is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is just for the school board, all those in favor? Five to zero. And then we don't have to worry about eleven, right?
We don't have to worry about eleven, but we can go back to eight and nine.
Okay, how do we approach those?
So, um, as I mentioned earlier, we had two petition warrant articles filed. One will be the new, will be Article Eight, which is shall we adopt the provisions of RSA forty colon thirteen, known as SB two, to allow official ballot voting? On all issues before the Hollis-Brooklyn Cooperative School District on the second Tuesday of March, submitted by citizens petition. So, we are not, as a budget committee, required to take a position on this, we have in the past, we have not in the past. So it's just one of those things where we can consider as a committee if we want to take a position on it, I think this is the-
I don't know how many years.
Board here, this one has come up.
And then the options for the school board are, we could take a position tonight if we feel like we're ready to do so, we've seen this petition warrant article before. Or we could choose to take a petition at the school board meeting on February twelfth, right? And there will be a public hearing on this on the seventeenth and eighteenth, one in Hollis and one in Brookline, in February, right? But I'm not sure which one is which.
Monday the seventeenth is Brookline, and Tuesday the eighteenth is Hollis.
So it's up to just generally the school board if they want to take a position on this tonight, or if they'd like to postpone it till the, I can, I think we can just get feedback on that, we're not voting on whether or not to take a position, we're just-
Are the other two board members likely to be present at that meeting, do we have any?
I would assume they would be present, so would you like to wait, I mean, we can definitely do it-
I would rather wait if they're going to be there.
Okay, that's great. Is that however, is that good with everybody, okay, so we'll, we'll do both of those at our meeting, but you guys can do them tonight.
Okay, we don't have a, another scheduled meeting before the March meeting, so I'll just open it up to committee members for discussion and just of whether we'd like to take a position or not.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I would.
Take a position? Okay, so everybody knows what SB two is. It moves us to away from the town meeting form of government, where we have, would now have a public hearing, a deliberative session, and then anything decided that did deliver a session goes to a ballot vote. So is there any, actually, I'll take a, everything has to be in the affirmative, right?
I think you'd have to take a motion to amend it, to, to recommend it.
Okay, so-
Is this at the meeting this time or not on the ballot?
Actually, yes, due to a change in legislation, the vote on SB two takes place at the town meeting as opposed to on a ballot. The district meeting.
And is, it is a special ballot vote, I mean, is it required to be a ballot or is it by request? So it can be a card vote?
Actually, I-
It's a sixty percent majority, isn't it?
It's a sixty percent, so I'll, I'll know by-
I think I read somewhere where it was, but I might, when, when the RSA first changed, but I'm not sure.
Right, it's sixty, well, it's sixty percent, even if it's at the meeting, yes. Again, I will, I will know by the time of the meeting, for sure.
Is there any other discussion?
Do, do you need to make a recommendation to put on the floor?
We, I will. So, at this point, I'll take a motion to recommend the Article Eight, the citizens petition for the co-op school district to change to an SB two form of voting. By Lauren, seconded by Brian. Any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all-
Should we discuss how we're going to vote and then vote, or should we just go ahead and vote and?
Just vote.
Whatever you want to do, can you comment?
I mean, I will vote for the petition. Because if something is working relatively fine, why change it? And I like the idea of, you know, one of the tradition of this district is to meet once a year and participate. And so it is, this process isn't broken, so why change it?
And very, and very occasionally, we meet twice a year and we just prove that it does work, so. Once every, I don't know, five years or so.
And there's nothing wrong with that, so I'm not in favor of supporting this, this warrant article.
Can I just ask a question? Is, would an apportionment meeting, would all meetings, can you not have a special meeting? That isn't with a ballot vote?
Oh.
I, it gets really tricky if the budget is defeated. My point is if you were having an apportionment meeting, can you have an apportionment meeting with voting at that meeting? It's all SB two.
So everything would go through deliberative session, any petitions, any?
So apportionment would have to be-
It would, it would have to go on the ballot.
Deliberative session followed by a vote. But it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be, um, on the ballot, with a voting day ballot, you can have it at a different time.
So if you had-
You can have a separate deliberative session and voting day.
For that, just for that.
But for lots of reasons, you might want to do it on the same voting day? Could you have two different deliberative sessions and have voting on the same day? Sure. I mean, it's all, and let's remember, SB two is plowed over by the legislature every session. So whatever I, it applies to this year, it might be- A motion to- Whatever you say applies to last year. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving the question. From the budget committee, all those in favor of recommending SB two? All those opposed? So, I never know how this is worded, so it would say-
Does not recommend.
So it says, does not recommend by a vote of zero to eight, is that, or eight to zero, you flip it.
You can propose the motion in the affirmative, but you can express the vote.
The opposite, okay.
Right.
Great. Okay. Article Nine, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA thirty-two colon five dash B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body or budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget increase? A recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes prior to the, based on the prior fiscal year's actual amount of local taxes raised by more than two percent submitted by citizens petition?
So move.
Excellent. By, moved by Lauren, seconded by Brian. So this is the tax cap article, it came up last year and was postponed indefinitely before presentations were made. And it does as it says, it implements a tax cap of two percent on the district.
Who's the highest one yet, in recent years?
Uh, the highest it's gone, I would have to- Give me one second.
That also limits the budget to end of July. So something major could happen, right?
So, what's that change? The highest would have been last year, well, this year that we're in right now, which was a ten percent increase in tax effort. Every, the data I have in front of me is for, goes back to FY oh-eight, and it's gone between minus five percent and positive ten percent over that period. And some of those decreases happened in years, the budget went up and the tax effort went down, or the opposite happened, budget would not tack, you know, just-
Do I have to ask a question?
Yeah, anyone can have questions.
If, if a labor contract is in the budget, it's treated differently than if it would have to be voted on by a warrant article? Would, would a non-sanctionized contract be outside the tax cap?
Yes, I believe it would be, because the budget committee, it only limits, the budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget. So this specifically says, the budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget, any articles on, from CBAs are not what the budget committee is putting forward. So they would be outside of-
But if it was sanctioned, in the, in, everything but the first year, it would be?
Yes, then it would be in the operating budget.
Thank you.
And this is specifically to the budget committee? They are restricting us?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
For making a recommendation.
Yeah, although with, you know, because- It's more than just a recommendation, it's actually the budget.
Right.
So when this was brought up in Brookline last year, you know, it got changed from the two percent to eight percent during the meeting, and, you know, now we have an eight percent cap. So, so that can happen too.
So maybe originally, they should have submitted a change from ten to eight, right? Going through this exercise.
No, it was submitted at two.
Yes.
It was submitted at two.
Okay.
I knew that was.
So it got changed to eight and that actually passed versus it getting voted down, but.
The message was still the same.
Yeah, eight's reasonable. Or is it ten or?
You went to go to ten, we said don't go to ten to eight.
So, seeing any, any other discussion from the budget committee, I strongly encourage us to take a position on this? Because we're directly affected by, everything we do is directly affected by it, so. Okay, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the citizens petition to adopt a tax cap? All those opposed? So the budget committee will not recommend Article Nine unanimously, eight to zero. And I will present an organized rebuttal for the budget committee. Based on that recommendation, or non, the non-recommendation.
Did you hear that?
Drew, I'm going to be presenting an organized rebuttal representing the budget committee.
Really? I didn't know that.
I think at this point, you just need a motion to adjourn, are we done?
Um, I don't know if you want to take a position on it or if you're going to wait.
We're going to wait on both of those.
Okay.
I think that was the consensus I heard, right?
Okay, oh, the only other thing I wanted to bring up too, again, because this is the last meeting of the budget committee, there was another petition warrant article filed for the town of Brookline? That requests, if passed, requests the co-op school board to conduct a feasibility study on Brookline's withdrawal from the co-op. So, we are not require, we, we can't take an official position, it's not an article that would appear on our warrant. No Hollis member of either board is allowed to speak at a Brookline town meeting, but we have Brookline representation who may attend their town meeting. And I think it's a good idea that we can at least take a sense of the board of whether or not, or a sense of the committee of whether or not we would support that motion? And at least those members who might attend, who might offer input at their meeting could represent the position that our committee took. So, based on that, I, actually, I want to do, I, I'm going to actually take a motion, I don't want to take just a sense of the board. So I would like a motion from the budget committee to recommend support for the feasibility study to look at Brookline's withdrawal from the co-op.
Since we're not-
Oh, do we, I don't have to, it's not-
We don't necessarily have to put this in the, in the, in the, in the positive sense.
Okay, great, so I'm going to make, then I would be, oh, well-
I'll tell you what-
Someone has to make a motion.
I, I will move that we express opposition to withdrawal of, of Brookline from the co-op.
Thank you, is there a second? Seconded by Dave. Any discussion?
So-
So what we would be doing-
It seems to me that why should we be responsible for doing this analysis of alternatives, for example? Why isn't that, this Brookline's responsibility?
It's required under the state law, if somebody was withdrawn, then the, the school board has to put together a plan that has to go up to Department of Education and be approved.
So in this case, the co-op is responsible for doing it?
So-
Yeah.
So I believe the RSA and information I sent earlier today has the wording, it's one ninety-five, twenty, colon twenty-five? That talks about submitting the petition, having the, the school board-
The first step towards dissolution.
Right, do the feasibility study and things like that.
So, the study committee, it's more than a study committee? This is?
It's the beginning, it's the first step. It's the first step, it's a, it's a, they call it a feasibility study, it's a committee that gathers, gathers data and at the end of that, the committee will make a recommendation? Or not a recommendation, to the state on whether or not it's feasible.
And that committee's made up of what?
It's defined, it's defined in the RSA.
I'm sure it's defined in the RSA.
I think it's the superintendent, a board member-
There's a minimum-
Yeah.
Attendance that has a selectman from each, each town, and a school board member from each town.
Right.
I think, and then it says four members of the public from each town.
It's all in the RSA.
It just says such other members as may be appointed.
Then anything else is discretionary.
And the superintendent is involved as well.
The outcome, even if the recommendation is against it, there can be a minority recommendation for it. And if, and the, the, it goes to the state, and if the recommendation was against it, and there was a minority report, that will be considered.
The actual, the, does the feasibility study go forward to the state, or does it have to be voted on first? Because the voting-
It can carry, it keeps carrying forward if there is any, any support.
I, it, wasn't there a change to the voting that says, any vote to dissolve has to take place at SB two, whatever the meeting is? It has to be approved by the body in total and approved by the town requesting dissolution. If it fails- If it fails in total but passes by the town requesting it, it can still move forward. If it fails on both counts...
That's if it comes, that's after it comes back from the state. But what I'm saying is...
Okay, so you're saying the feasibility study and all of that goes first, it comes back and gets approved, and then we do the vote. Okay, okay. I have it now. Okay.
So they, they call it feasibility, why? I mean...
They call it a committee, actually, yeah.
It really should be whether, if, if the town wants to leave the Co-op, the question is, is it advantageous for the town to leave the Co-op?
For both towns, for all towns.
So it should be for both towns. So maybe there should be...
There's representation on the committee from all constituent communities. And that committee makes a recommendation, and it can have a minor, it can have a minority recommendation as well. And all that goes to the state, and the state makes a determination as to whether there is sufficient cause to put it to a vote.
So it really cannot be a unilateral motion, I mean, uh...
But it has to have a full plan, like, does the feasibility study have to have the full plan of how the students would be educated in either, or whatever?
It's very ambiguous about what that plan is.
Right. I mean, the intent is to provide the state with all the information to make an informed decision.
I don't really care about the details of this, I'd like to vote if I could.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you know, if it goes forward, fine, then I'll get the details. I know what I'm going to do here.
Okay. Great. All those in favor of opposing? I'm sorry, Brian, how did you word it?
Expressing the opinion of the board that we are opposed to this proposal.
All those in favor of opposition from the Budget Committee? All those opposed to the opposition? One. Seven to one. Okay, thank you.
I think for the School Board, again, I think we probably need to put this at, at our School Board meeting so we can weigh, have the weighing from all members of our board who will be there, I hope. I can't force them there, but I will.
Can I just ask that all the School Board members, make sure you sign my documents before you leave for the, the warrant?
And Kelly, when do you need the Budget Committee members' signatures?
I'll have to create the MS twenty-seven, so I'll contact everyone and let them know it's ready to be signed at the SAU.
Okay, what is the, do you remember the, the deadline? I don't remember the details for it.
I don't. We have time, though.
Okay, perfect. We get that information.
If I could, I'd like to comment on your presentations. I love a meeting with pace. Your, your opening discussion was less than ten minutes, your budget presentation was less than five minutes. Thank you very much. Please do that at the meeting.
More quicker.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very nice. That's not, no. We get elbowing.
Appreciate it.
Some Red Bull.
Thank you. I want to just remind members, our, so our Brooklines, are all of Brookline's members' meetings finished?
Yes.
Except for our voter, no.
Okay.
The Brookline School District meeting.
School District. When is the Brookline Town?
Monday after election day.
Okay, so that's in March.
March twelfth, March.
Um, March twelfth is the Brookline...
March eleventh, town meeting.
March eleventh, okay. Hollis has two public hearings next week, one for the town on Monday and one for the School District on Thursday. And then, I'll get everybody the date for the Hollis School District March meeting. I don't...
Oh, that is March seventeenth for the Co-op.
Well, here's the Co-op, but I don't remember for the Hollis School District.
I think it's the day of four.
Thirteen, is it?
The ninth?[1748.87]